Mayor, whenever you're ready.
We're calling this meeting to order. Can everyone take their seats? Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Joseph? Commissioner Lama? Commissioner Sivasan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vasara?
Here.
Mayor Goldman?
Here.
All members present, madam.
Pledge of allegiance. Mr. Raffaelli, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, quote un- We will not have an invocation this evening. So we go to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes. Can we have a, can we have a motion? Can someone move to approve the minutes?
Yeah, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that may come before the City Commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking, and that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening. Everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speakers card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to one three-minute comment per item. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or you don't see speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers. As far as the order of business, there is one change to the agenda, and that's Item 10D, Resolution Expressing Support for Ukraine, that will be heard after Item 5B. Do I hear, can I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now for our special presentations. Proclamations?
Yes, the first one is proclamation recognizing Women History Month.
Okay, thank you. So, back in January, I suggested that we try and tie Women's History Month more to our own history. Since Sunny Isles Beach turns 25 this year, I thought it would be nice to use Women's History Month to honor the contributions made by women leaders who not only made Sunny Isles Beach possible, but who helped guide our city in those pivotal early years. In that spirit, our media team created a website and is highlighting one extraordinary woman per week across all platforms and in their email blasts. The women are Senator Guan Margolis, the first woman in the country to become the Senate President, and who's, yeah, one of our most famous popular parks is named after her, but that's not entirely the reason why, because Senator Margolis also played an integral role in our incorporation as a city and served on the city's charter in 1997. The second extraordinary woman is Dr. Connie Morrow. She was one of our first elected commissioners in 1997, and you'll see them up there. And our first woman vice mayor, she served as vice mayor from 99 to 2000. Dr. Morrow was passionate about encouraging children to pursue the arts and worked to make Sunny Isles Beach a destination city for arts and entertainment. Our third extraordinary woman is Ayla Kaufman. She was also one of our first elected commissioners in 97 and was vice mayor from 2000 to 2001. She was influential in the creation of our cultural events programs, which is now the Cultural and Community Services Department. That literally touches all of us. And last, but certainly not least, is Rosalind Bresin, also known as Roz. Like Senator Margolis, she served on the city's charter commission in 1997 and then went on to serve as commissioner from 2003 to 2012. In her long tenure, she was a fierce advocate for seniors and park beautification, and it is because of her extraordinary role with seniors that one of the wings in Gateway Park is named after her. So I'm grateful for their example and contributions, because our lives would certainly not be the same without them. I would add that in, in Dade County, I did some research a little while ago, we have, out of 33 municipalities, eight women mayors, 10 municipalities with majority-women commission, and five with both majority-women commission and women mayors. So that's, that includes Sunny Isles Beach in every category. So it's, it's, you know, we're moving along. And so with that, there'll be like closing comments if you'd read the proclamation into the record.
So we're gonna do it a little bit different this time, considering that it is Women's History Month. It's a little ironic if I were to read it, so.
Very enough.
Susan has involuntarily volunteered to read it.
We voluntold her.
And I don't read as fast as Mauricio, so bear with me, please. City of Sunny Isles Beach proclamation. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas, women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas, women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the chief rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of world history. And whereas, the 2022 Women's History theme, Providing Healing, Promoting Hope, is both a tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during this ongoing pandemic and also a recognition of the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history. Now therefore do I, Dana Robin Goldman, as mayor and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 as Women's History Month in the City of Sunny Isles Beach.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I think we also have a celebrating women event at the end of the month, is that right?
Yes, we do, actually. Is Olivia gonna come up and mention that? Yes, we have March 30th at Gateway Center, celebrating women networking event from 5:00 to 7:00. We'll be sending out invitations, the website is up with the information. And we're inviting women from the community, either who live here or work here, to come to this event. We'll have an opportunity to network with each other, brainstorm various ways how we can support each other, as well as supporting the community. And it will be a free event, but registration will be required.
Excellent, thank you. 5B?
Yeah, 5B, it's a proclamation presented for colorectal cancer awareness month.
I'd like to read that proclamation into the record, some, an item that's very near and dear.
Proclamation reads, whereas colorectal cancer, also known as colon cancer or rectal cancer, starts in either the colon or rectum, affecting the digestive or gastrointestinal system and normally manifests as a growth called polyp. Whereas over 150,000 Americans are diagnosed with colorectal cancer each year, and it is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States among men and women combined, with African-Americans having a higher percentage of those deaths. And whereas, the American Cancer Society states that nearly 53,000 deaths are projected in 2022, with a possibility of an additional 4,500 cases due to a drop in the number of screenings during the pandemic. And whereas, while younger people can get colorectal cancer, it is more common in individuals over the age of 50. An increased risk include family history and lifestyle-related factors such as diet, weight, lack of exercise, smoking, and alcohol usage. And whereas, colorectal cancer often has no symptoms, but it can be prevented through healthy lifestyles and regular colonoscopy screenings. And if detected early, it is highly treatable through surgery, systemic treatments, chemotherapy, and radiation. And it is estimated that the survival rate for those treated is approximately 80%. And whereas, Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month was established to bring awareness to the importance of early detection and the success it can bring. Now therefore do I, Dana Robin Goldman, as mayor and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Sunny Isles Beach.
Thank you, thank you very much. We had a presentation by Mount Sinai this, this past couple of weeks, and very important topic, and importance of screening and early detection and saving lives. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, Item 10D. Express-
10D, I'm sorry. 10D is a resolution expressing support for leaders of the people of Ukraine as they defend against Russia's aggression and attack on the sovereign nation.
On February 24th, 2022, Russian forces enabled by Belarus launched its unprovoked, full-scale renewed invasion of the peaceful, independent country of Ukraine. The city of Sunny Isles Beach recognizes these acts of war are greatest felt by the people of Ukraine and therefore must stand with them as their personal safety and way of life are now under assault by an authoritarian regime. This resolution expresses the city's support for the democratic government of Ukraine and stands in solidarity with its innocent and peaceful people and condemns Vladimir Putin's invasion and acts of war. It is, the war in Ukraine is omnipresent. It's horrifying, it's shocking, it's unprecedented, it's really, it's so, it is, it is so dramatic and so significant and so impactful, especially to our, our community. And every bit of support that we can lend to, to Ukraine, whether it's by word, or by prayer, or by humanitarian support, every effort that we can, we can express towards solidarity with Ukraine is really, it matters. It absolutely matters. So with that, I'd like to read the resolution. Whereas, Ukraine proclaimed its independence from the Union of Soviet Socialist Republics on August 24th, 1991. And whereas, on December 1st, 1991, more than 90% of Ukrainian citizens voted in a national referendum in support of independence with majorities in every region. And whereas, Ukraine is home to nearly 44 million citizens, is the second-largest country in the European continent, and is a unitary republic led by a president elected by popular vote. And whereas, in 2014, the Russian military, under the direction of Vladimir Putin, invaded and then annexed the Crimean Peninsula from Ukraine in violation of international law and agreements, resulting in the deaths of an estimated 13,000 Ukrainian soldiers and civilians. And whereas, on February 24th, 2022, Russian forces enabled by Belarus launched its unprovoked, full-scale renewed invasion of a peaceful, independent country, Ukraine. And whereas, it is the right of all countries to decide their own future, foreign policy, and security arrangements free from outside interference or coercion. And whereas, on February 24th, 2022, the G7 issued a statement condemning the large-scale military aggression by the Russian Federation against the territorial integrity, sovereignty, and independence of Ukraine. And whereas, on February 25th, 2022, NATO condemned, in the strongest possible terms, Russia's horrifying attack on Ukraine, called on Russia to turn back from the path of violence and aggression, and reaffirmed an ironclad commitment to Article 5. And whereas, the City Commission for the City of Sunny Isles Beach recognizes these acts of war are greatest felt by the people of Ukraine and therefore must stand with them as their personal safety and way of life are now under assault by an authoritarian regime. And whereas, the city stands in solidarity with the Ukrainian people and condemns Vladimir Putin's acts of war and Russia's invasion of a free and democratic Ukraine. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, hereby expresses support for the Ukrainian people and condemns Vladimir Putin's acts of war and Russia's invasion of a free and democratic Ukraine.
We do have someone that wanted to say a few words, Julia?
Hello, dear friends, thank you so much for inviting me. My name is Julia Lemish. I'm Ukrainian, and I live here in Sunny Isles, so I'm Sunny Isles resident. This resolution is very important for us as a community. There is a large Ukrainian community living in Sunny Isles. And if you don't mind, I'll just, you know, share a couple of words about like my impression of what's going on. Just, it won't take more than three minutes. I'm Ukrainian, raised in Odessa, a city on the Black Sea. It's devastating for me to see how Putin is destroying my country and killing our people. Putin bombed the Children's Hospital and maternity ward in the port city of Mariupol on the Sea of Azov, I'm sure you've heard of it. At least 17 people were injured, mothers and staff, as a result of the Russian attack. As of now, around 100 children are killed by, by Putin. Information on victims is being clarified. What Putin is doing with my country is barbaric. Our president fairly called the attack a war crime. The whole city remains without electricity, water, food, and people are dying because of dehydration. And it's not only Mariupol, it happens to many cities right now in Ukraine, like Kharkiv, like Bucha, like Irpin. I also want to say that for me and other Ukrainians, there's no question if Putin is a war criminal. He certainly is. And it's important to understand that Ukraine isn't just fighting for the freedom of Ukraine. Ukrainian men and women are fighting for the security of the entire Europe. Just like in World War I, just like in World War II, just like during the times of the Austro-Hungarian and Russian empires, Ukraine is a buffer, probably the buffer between light and darkness, between the civilized and the barbaric worlds. The latest numbers show that above more than 2 million people have left out of a total population of nearly 45 million people in Ukraine. And of course, we asked the US government to support Ukrainian refugees. So far, there are no refugee programs for Ukrainians, and many are being denied tourist visas. Having said that, we cannot evacuate and resettle 45 million people, so we must keep our main goal in mind, to end this war. Ukrainians are fighting hard, but it's impossible for them to stand up to Putin without more support from the United States. Dear friends, I would really appreciate if you could, you know, send a message to Washington DC that Ukraine needs fighter jets and MiGs from neighboring countries. This is the exact help that we need from US government to win the war. Ukraine either wins, or it loses. I also would really appreciate if, you know, you, dear commissioners and city mayor, city manager could come to our rally to actually organize on this Friday from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock in Gateway Park, Sunny Isles. It's gonna be peaceful rally. Where we're gonna raise our voices and ask for ear support for Ukraine, fighter jets and MiGs. We're not asking for no-fly zone, but we're asking for ear support. We also would like to, I would really appreciate if you consider, you know, city program for those people who host Ukrainians. As of now, there is no refugee program, so there is no refugee visa. However, there's, there are many Ukrainians who came to Sunny Isles and stayed here, and then the war started. So technically, they, they don't have home to come back. And they've been hosted by some Ukrainians here in Sunny Isles. And if there is any financial support, well, please consider it for such host families, because now they're taking care of, you know, other families. Before, there's a governmental program, of course, hopefully will come in place. And I just also want to say, thank you for, you know, for this resolution today. It's really important that Sunny Isles stays with the Ukrainian people and, you know, made the statement. So, you know, we hear your voice, we hear that you are with us. Thank you so much, I really hope you will come join us for rally on this Friday. Thank you.
We will be there.
Thank you.
Comments, motion?
No, there's nothing here.
Okay.
I apologize, yes, this is a resolution, we need a motion, my mistake.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, mayor, if I can, yes. I'd like to call up our interim chief Santiago. And I just wanted to give you a brief update on our efforts from the police department. I've asked Chief Santiago to come up and give you an overview of some of the things that we've been working on together. I first wanted to share with you that he and I have probably spent more time together in the past two weeks, and I think in the past nine years, that we've worked together. And we've really kind of delved into some of the issues. And I've asked him to give you an update. Interim Chief Santiago's been here since day one, and he has progressed up through the ranks, becoming captain and now interim chief. He, he shared with me, he's got a young family, and he is, has a vested interest in the success of our city and our police department moving forward. We've together, I, I've been able, through some of the peaceful rallies that were mentioned earlier, to work directly with him and see our police department in, in action and how we've, we've worked together to ensure the safety of all of the participants and residents. We've also spent time talking with our officers and our command staff and asked them to find out, let us know some of the things that they need in order to be successful. And obviously, pedestrian safety is our number-one focus. I've, I've heard from the community, the positive feedback about seeing officers on the street. We've also reinstituted our bicycle patrol that we've used at some of these different events. When I've met with some of the men and women of the police department, I've asked them, what are some of the things that you need that we can do in short order to help you? And one of the things that was mentioned that Chief brought to me was Jeep was requested. And I inquired as to the reason why. And I was surprised to learn that when we're doing some of our beach patrol, some of our existing SUVs get stuck in the sand. So it seems like a simple request that has been ordered, and we're working on getting that onboard, which will increase our visibility from beach patrol and not have our vehicles being stuck in the sand. Some of the other things that were mentioned to me were things such as our, our marine patrol unit, our boat, we're consistently having to make repairs. And we've received some information on pricing for a new marine patrol unit that we're gonna bring to you and ask for your approval. I'm working with the finance department to see if these items can be paid through our forfeiture fund, but those are some of our, our recent efforts. And then, of course, probably the number-one priority is officers and adding additional officers. It's something that you've shared with me as a priority. Interim Chief and I have spoken about it. I've also heard the same thing from our men and women of the police department. So what we're doing, I've worked with the HR department and the police department. We are going to start offering both certified and non-certified officers to bring them onboard. And we're going to be offering incentive sign-on bonuses. We're still working out the details, but for both certified and non-certified officers with a three-year commitment, they will be rewarded with sign-on bonuses. So we're making ourselves competitive in, in the market. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chief, if he could just, I've asked him to put together a list, because we've worked together on so many things, and he's done things that I'm not aware of, per se. So I've asked him to kind of highlight some of the things and let you know. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. First, I would like to thank everybody for the opportunity and having the faith in me to lead the men and women of our great police department. We have an incredible amount of talent within our police department. Men and women love this city, dedicated to the city, and they, on a daily basis, and people really don't see it, but they go above and beyond on a daily basis. And that's the type of people that we're looking to hire. So I'm, I'm gonna start off, and this is a short list, actually, I hit the ground running. I had a lot of help from everybody up here and from the department itself. During the month of February, our Marine Patrol, Corporal Rob Ostrow participated in a multi-agency Marine Patrol operation during the night hours on the weekend. They targeted drunks driving boats, they targeted loud music on the intercoastal, I know that's been a hot topic, narcotics, human trafficking, and, of course, speeding and boating violations. And it was very successful, and this is not gonna be the only one, it's gonna continue. Secondly, we made contact with Miami-Dade School Board recess officer Ruiz, and we were able to get involved with their explorers. They have an explorer program at the school, and we're able to bring them over to our police station. And we gave a tour of our police station and a demonstration in our roll call room. Sergeant Jomora was amazing. Basically, gave a demonstration with ballistic shields, our breach kits, and different types of equipment. The kids were engaged, they had a great time. And the goal of the explorers program is to provide students the opportunity to learn about a career in law enforcement and gain insight in police work through firsthand experience. So, most recently, obviously, we formulated an operational plan for several protests. The first one was at Gateway Park, there was approximately 500 people. It was put together at the last minute, and it was a protest, it was a Russian-Ukrainian war. And we're gonna be helping, actually, she left. Okay. So we're gonna be assisting this weekend with another one. But we've had a total of three so far. And so we had two smaller ones, and the operations were successful. We had no adverse incidents and no complaints. So this month, I was able to add two temporary acting positions. Detective Keith Burrows is the acting sergeant in the detective bureau. And Sergeant Luke Plisa is gonna be the acting lieutenant in the administrative division. We also got with a training sergeant, who is just absolutely amazing, has a lot of ability. And this is something he wanted to do. He put together a curriculum to offer all our religious institutions in the city, active shooter training. And we already started reaching out to- We want to get it going. We made contact with three, we paid a visit to them, and they really want to get it going. And that's something we want to do very soon and in their future. And it's also an opportunity to get our officers familiar with the institutions itself. So additionally, last week, Commissioner Sally Hayman, thank you for her, donated an incredible electric bike to the city of Sunny Isles Beach to our police department. That was on March 11th, and it was assigned to uniform patrol officer Michael Barolari, who I will say has been Officer of the Month twice in the last five months. And he's certified to ride the bicycle, and it was immediately used during this protest. So we're hoping to have it this weekend. If we can get it, we added police lights and some signage on it to have it stand out more. But if not, he'll be on a regular bike, but it's definitely an asset and maybe something to look forward to in the future to add more. To further enhance our community policing efforts, under downtime, again, officers are utilizing their bicycles to ride through neighborhoods after hours. We added UTV beach patrol on weekends during spring break. To step up our traffic and pedestrian safety, we actually enabled flashing white lights on our existing speed display signs that are on Collins Avenue. So, and it's in the process, hopefully by this week or next week, when you're speeding, not only the speed limit will flash at you, but you're going to get white lights flashing at you, more awareness. Secondly, we have an additional speed display sign being put up in Golden Shores on Atlantic Boulevard. I talked to Fabrizio today, he should be done by next week. He has all the materials. What I'm really excited about, we ordered two new police cars for our two traffic unit members. We have two new traffic unit members that started in February, and we're going with, they're called ghost cars. Ghost cars are very modern and they're traffic-oriented. So it's, it's a very, like, grayed-out police markings, so you don't really see the police car because there's not lights on top, they're all around the car and inside. So you can actually speed past the car, and you're going to be like, oh, boy, because they're going to get you. And a lot of agencies have gone to this, it's been very successful, and I'm looking to, with your approval in the future, to, to keep this going. Additionally, lastly, something, you know, with the support of the mayor and commission and the manager, we're able to get an additional crossing guard at a very important location, 174 Street and North Bay Road, and made an immediate impact. We got a lot of phone calls saying thank you. It's an important location, a lot of kids, parents, I mean, that's just a well-traveled, you know, area. So, and one thing I don't want to leave out, Ocean Rescue. Wow, tremendous. They, I just got a text 10 minutes ago on a, on a medical call that they helped, helped out on. We had many strong rip currents this past month, and we had many successful rescues. To improve our beach safety, we're also in the process of ordering four new UTVs for Ocean Rescue, and we're also waiting for a date to schedule and demo an electric UTV for the beach to try to go towards that direction, along with some hybrid police cars in the future. So that's just the short of it. And again, thank you for the opportunity, and I'm going to make you proud.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, interim chief.
Mayor, also, we have a lot of residents from Golden Shores, and so I've asked Paul to come up and give an update on our efforts towards the undergrounding. So Paul, please.
Good evening. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me a few more of your valuable minutes. I have good news and I have bad news. The good news, as I told you at last month's meeting, we were waiting for material and with the, the, the supply chain shortages and all, we were challenged. We now have essentially all of the material we need to begin the Golden Shores undergrounding project. So that's the good news. The bad news is we're going to begin the project. We're going to start next Monday at 191st Street, the dead-end portion, if you think of that one small block, half-block area that goes east from Atlantic out toward Collins. There's some significant electrical equipment that is going to be installed there. So that's where we're going to start. From there, we will be going tw- western toward Atlantic, we'll go north on Atlantic to 191st Terrace, we'll go west on 191st Terrace, turn down Golden, uh, North Bay Road, come back up 191st Street, and we're just going to serpentine throughout the entire community in that manner. For, if this can get to the camera, our endeavor is to put these notices on door hangers, mailbox hangers, wherever we can get them, that residents will see them with a, we're going to try to do a three-day notice, minimum will be a two-day notice to let the resident know that we will be coming near their home and the activities that will then proceed with excavation, conduit placement, concrete pad placement, all the things that go along with undergrounding. There has been activity this last week, I met with some residents already today. The contractor is out marking the right-of-way. A little bit of education, everybody thinks that they own the property out to the edge of the pavement. Unfortunately, while you cut the grass and plant the trees and maintain it, the right-of-way does protrude in from the edge of street. So if you see a small stake sticking up approximately an inch or two out of the ground, that is the actual property line and right-of-way marker. They're being painted pink, they're being tied off with a pink surveyor's tape. Unfortunately, as lawns are cut and everything else, those tapes seem to disappear, but the stakes are the right-of-way. The point in that is we will not be going beyond that right-of-way line. The major excavation is in the pavement, the common trench where the majority of all the conduit is, is in the common trench, but there will be perpendicular access into individual properties where we bring in service boxes, handholds, transformer bases and the like. On this notice, there is a phone number. If anyone has questions, comments, any concerns, please contact. There's also a website that's been set up, the, it's an email website where we will be updating progress throughout the, the life of the project. Another very positive thing to keep in mind with what we experienced last week and as we'll be getting to see the spring rains, improvements to the storm drainage system, adding new storm lines, adding some new catch basins, some new manholes, is all so being designed to be incorporated into the undergrounding project, and we will be pursuing those very, very soon. As the conduit and electrical undergrounding go in, we'll also be improving the, the drainage in certain areas within the community. Happy to address any questions as you have them, or, but we're anxious to get started now.
Paul, what did you mention to me about mailboxes? Maybe neighbors are interested in hearing that.
One of the issues that we encountered during the streetlight project were mailboxes that were either in conflict with where the new, uh, uh, streetlights were going. Well, they're going to be even more in conflict and I would say more in jeopardy with the, with the undergrounding project. We have some beautiful, well-maintained decorative mailboxes, and we have other mailboxes that maybe aren't fitting to the quality of our community. I'm working with the deputy city manager to work out a program to where we can have some immediate mailboxes, sort of a uniform-type mailbox available to us to have available if, as we need to relocate a, an older mailbox, and it literally deteriorates on us, that we would have something to put in place there. Not suggesting that we would present a uniform mailbox installation throughout the entire community, because as they say, there's a certain personality to mailboxes, but we are going to try to be a, a step ahead and have available resources to us to, to keep that operation going without reeking the ire of the US Postal Service.
Okay. And just one other question. Now, have you run into yet people who don't have underground electric at, at the time?
Oh, of course. I, I actually met with a resident today to explain how, the, the first phase, and I want to continue to remind everyone, the first phase now is to do the main duct bank. This is to get the main lines in, that then FPL and the other low-voltage utilities will come in and put their conductors in. The city doesn't put in the wires. The individual utilities installs the wires, but once that's done, once the system is installed, the transformers, the switches, all the other apparatuses in place, the utilities will energize. At that point in time, we will then be going into the individual residents to, to bring the power to their homes. Some of the newer homes are already underground. They have a, 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 a pole box, it's the, the unit that's buried in the ground at the base of a pole, and that makes it real simple. All we have to do is take a line to that pole. Other homes, some of the older homes, there are homes there that are 1950s in age, that we are initiating a complete detailed survey of each and every home and what may or may not have to be done to those individual residents to be able to convert them to an underground service.
Now, have you done a neighborhood assessment yet?
We have all of the locations identified on our design maps. We have not done the physical, each home identify the adaptability of the existing box. But that's an ongoing process that will be going contiguous with our engineering staff while the contractor is doing the mainline installation.
Right. So at some point, the city might have to have a conversation with the homeowner, correct?
That's a point of discussion that I've mentioned to the manager, the deputy manager, that I want to form a recommendation to bring back to commission on how we will address the issue of how we bring individual services to the individual homes. I've worked in a dozen communities and undergrounding projects, and I don't think of the 12 or 13 I've done, there has been a consistent approach in any one of the 12 or 13. So I'd like to bring forward the positives, the negatives, the, the different approaches to how we do the physical conversions. I, I will remind you, we are at least, at least nine to 12 months away from the point where we will be physically converting. I have 10 homes I have to do right now in Atlantic, and because they are part of the original, you, the, the Collins Avenue undergrounding, because those homes back into Collins Avenue. We're going to use that as a testbed, and we'll be back to you on, on how we recommend and put before you how you can consider how we handle that.
Perfect.
So that's nine to 12 months for this, this initial phase, correct?
Yes.
So it's nine to 12 months from now, so.
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
I'm sorry, you took pre-existing condition photos of every street, every home, every right-of-way?
Every stitch of vegetation in Golden Shores has in some way, shape, or form been, been documented. There's always that challenge when you start working in, 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 in a residential area of, well, was this the way it was before? And so we are, it's for mental preservation more than anything.
Right. So in the chance that there had been previously a driveway that had been damaged, at some point, that would be remedied?
The majority of our work will not be impacting driveways. We are doing, that's why the decision was made to do the main excavation in the asphalt so that we don't have to cut driveways. But one of the purposes of doing this detailed existing condition survey is we, we learned a little bit during the street lighting project.
Right.
People will claim that the contractor, and I'm not here to defend the contractor, I'm here to represent the residents in this community, but it's, fair is right. And, and if the contractor did damage, they will be held responsible for repairing. If it's existing damage, that's not the contractor's fault.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Ready for our zoning portion?
Yes. Before we, before we have the zoning portion, I'd just like to present a brief overview of the zoning and what we're trying to do that may answer some of the questions that we've had.
Can we do the opening statement first?
Yes, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this evening's agenda has one zoning application. In these matters, this commission sits in a quasi-judicial capacity. The decision of whether or not to approve a zoning variance is not a popularity contest but must be based upon substantial competent evidence as it is presented tonight. If you intend to provide testimony on any zoning application, you must be sworn in by the city clerk, and you should also fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. We will first hear from city staff and then from the applicant. After this, I will allow anyone from the audience who has been sworn in to provide testimony. The zoning applicant has the right to cross-examine any witness in for rebuttal. Please make your comments concisely. Mr. City Clerk, please read your introductory zoning statement.
In accordance with the LDRs of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, all items to be heard today have been legally advertised in newspaper, notices have been mailed and posted on the properties. Everyone that will be speaking and has filled out a public speaker card, please raise your right arm to be sworn in. Everyone, Benji, yes. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. Before we continue, are there any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed by anyone? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, before Claudia comes up to do the presentation, I wanted to give a little background on the site. The parcel in question is located at 215 185 Street. It is the site where the former Turnberry Sale Center was located. The city owns this site as well as the Navarro site, which currently has a five-year lease, and the property to the north of Navarro. It is a vacant lot being used by our undergrounding contractor currently. There's been a lot of information about this property and the purpose of the rezoning. These three properties were bought by the city in a proactive effort to preserve open space. I've been approached by private parties offering to buy one or all of the properties, and I've stated to them repeatedly, this, these properties are not for sale, that's not within my purview. And we, the city, me, as the manager, we have not entered into any sort of agreement or discussion regarding any private property purchase of any of these public properties. Further, as part of our purchase of these properties, the private property development rights have been extinguished, meaning that they cannot be developed, any of these three properties cannot be developed for private purposes. So there's been some misinformation about different businesses that are going to be at these properties that's incorrect and false. There's also a restrictive covenant that states that these properties must be used for a public purpose. This also, the restrictive covenant, limits the height of any property, we discussed before, to three stories. All three properties at some point in time, either now or in the future, will have to be rezoned in order for us to use them. If we do not rezone the properties, we cannot use them at all. The zoning item before you tonight is strictly related to 215 185 Street. It is currently zoned to build some point in time, either now or in the future, will have to be rezoned in order for us to use them. If we do not rezone the properties, we cannot use them at all. The zoning item before you tonight is strictly related to 215-185 Street. It is currently zoned to build townhomes. The existing trailers on the site are approximately 9,120 square feet. The trailers are in good condition. They've been inspected by our building department. They do need some minor repairs, and the city was able to negotiate $155,610 from Turnberry towards any of whatever you decide is going to be the future use of the property. Further, I would state that many of the residents may not know, but if the commission had not intervened, this site was slated to be turned into a 76-space parking lot, which could have potentially been used as a staging area. So that did not happen. After meeting with each of you on the site, it was determined that these trailers had some value and could have some use, that being a community facility. The item before you tonight is strictly related to the rezoning. Any of the future use of the property will be brought back to you where you will give us direction on how you would like the property used. We also are going to be working with a parks master plan where throughout the various properties that we own throughout the city, we want to bring back to you a plan where you're going to direct us on how would be the best use of our spaces going forward. Tomorrow, I plan on sending you an email. We've been compiling a list of all of our city-owned property, so you'll have a list of all the properties that we own, but I want you, as well as the public, to know, we're not going to plan any use for these properties. It's not brought before the public, and for you to give us direction on how the property is going to be used. So with that being said, I'm going to ask Claudia to do her presentation. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, we'll stand, basically cover all. So I'm just going to mention that this is under application, PC 2022-02, and the city is the one amending the official zoning map. We analyzed this property according to Code Section 265-16F, and we reviewed the standards that are applicable for modification and amendment to the zoning official map, and all the requirements, all the standards, they have been met, and staff actually is recommending approval for this amended amendment. So if you have any other questions regarding that, you mentioned it all.
Thank you. I think our city manager really took the heavy lifting.
Yes, she did.
Certainly, we've gone over the prior, you know, the disposition of that and the restrictive covenant that encumbers and runs with the land, and we've discussed the heights and the limitations, and the integral importance of, you know, of the rezoning of this property to allow for a community, a public use, right?
That is correct. The main final purpose, it is a public purpose for this property, and since it was exchanged for transfer development rights, the only uses they will be for recreational open space and community facilities.
Right. Those three items, you can say that again. Again, it could be for open space, it could be for recreational...
Open space, recreational, and community facilities.
Facilities, right. So it is more, is broader and more all-encompassing than just declaring this for an open space category, right?
That is correct. It's give you more flexibility.
And that's part and parcel of the comprehensive, the plan, the articulation?
It is consistent with the goals.
Consistent with the, okay. So I think we've covered the, we've covered the landscape, so to speak.
Yes, we did. If you have any other questions, I'm more than happy to address them.
We can open up for a public, okay. So we have three public speakers cards for this item, and so, Benji Raffaelli.
Yeah?
You're first up. You didn't want to do the pledge of allegiance, but you got the mic.
I rather sing than talk.
You did good. You did good. You did good. It was great. A good time was had by all.
And I hope we're going to have many more, like Alex wants every night. I said, no, once a week, it's going to be okay.
Not every night. I had to get new dancing shoes. Okay. State your name and address for the record, please.
Benji Raffaelli, 251-174 St., Winston Tower. Last week on Thursday, I was in a meeting, and I heard about the facility, and I saw pictures. I didn't see it inside, but I saw the facility. It's great. It's a great place for community center, which I think we need a community center, and we can have the singles event, because there is so many people, singles in Sunny Isle. We have, we can have a lot of functions, movies, shows, theater, lectures, music school. I have an idea, a long time ago, I came up with this idea, to have a music school for older people and younger people, and I'm willing to bring a lot of equipment. I have tons of storages with equipment that I can bring, speakers, microphones, pianos, guitars, and teaching kids and adults. The idea is that every month, we can have a concert. It's going to be free concert. It's not going to cost the city, because if the adults want to perform, and they're going to bring their kids, their grandchildren, the kids, the same, they're going to bring the whole family. So once a month, we can have a show. Not too much about all this stuff. I just mentioned, what's my idea, that we can use it as a community center? This is my opinion. I don't know why I have to swear for this, if it's my opinion.
That's the law.
So I hope you're going to go with it, and I want, really, I want to be part of it, to help you, to perform, and many more shows, to see you dancing. I love to see all of you on the dance floor.
Thank you. Again, just want to reiterate this. Thank you for your comments. This is a zoning, not a use. This is for zoning. We're just currently just looking at the zoning, the zoning portion. Thank you, Benji. Thank you. Okay, next up, Mr. Juan Crespi. State your name and address.
Juan Crespi, 19120 North Bay Road, Sunny Isle Beach. Seems I was here a few minutes ago, but let's do it again. Back in 2015, Commissioner Lou Thaler was District One. He committed to a basketball court for our youth in District One. He was initially going to go to Heritage Park. It ended up under the causeway. It didn't work out under the causeway, and consequently, our kids are playing street basketball. Every street up and down Sunny Isles, the Golden Shore area, at night or afternoons, there are kids playing in the street, and that's a danger to them and to the city. I took the liberty to walk the site with a contractor to see what's a lifespan of this temporary facilities. I think we're pushing it, and what I did is I took the liberty to, on my, let's say, architectural creative license, to say what would go in that site, because there are several opinions going around. Those are modules in 12-foot by certain lengths. Some are 20, some are 30, but they're basically 12-foot modules stacked together. That type of building can be disassembled in pieces and donated. Schools will probably take them. There might be a lot of other takers. It's not a bulldozer type of... So I took the liberty of doing two options that have been handed out to you. The option one removes the northern portion of the building, about 130 feet of the current building, and just keeps there the, let's say, the reception and the restroom areas. And this is just to get an idea of what fits in that site and where we're going. You know, it's true, this is only a zoning hearing, but we, the residents, we need to know and be assured where we're headed with this. With that removal, we can have a tennis court and two basketball courts. So we have a reception center that can be used for whatever multipurpose. We have the restrooms, and all of the parking in the foreground stays there. Option two, it's a complete removal of the trailers, of the temporary trailers, which are eyesores. We never asked for them. We never wanted them. They're put in there, and we, the residents, especially Golden Shores, we don't want to perpetuate their existence. With that removal, all we would have in there is surface parking. That was a parking lot initially. So in order to make that function, we could have two tennis courts, two basketball courts, and the parking in the foreground stays.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comments. Thank you.
Last but not least, I favor the rezoning.
Thank you. Zoning, not use. We have a third speaker, Mr. Steve Trattner.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, of course, I don't forget that. Steve Trattner, 265-187 St. Good evening. I know it's a zoning hearing, and I want to just get this on the record. I recognize the dilemma that you're under, given the current zoning and the future intended use in your restricted covenant. So I'll say, at least for the record, that I am in favor of the rezoning. I also understand that you're going to be hearing a lot of proposals for what to do with this property, plus the adjacent property. I want to tell you that, in my personal opinion, as well as many neighbors that I've spoken with, they also share this opinion, which is we do not want a facility. I recognize that there's a lot of desire to be able to bring programs to the area. At first blush, it seems like a great idea. The reality is we've got plenty of space throughout the city, Pelican Park, Gateway Park, et cetera, and unfortunately, a lot of it is unused. And so I think that we need to maximize the use of existing facilities. What we don't want to do is create additional facilities, which is going to be an enormous expense for the city, and we'd rather just consider proposals that are for outdoor recreation only. Indoor space, if we need to minimize this too, as Juan had said, a reception area from the existing sales center, just so that we've got bathroom facilities and, you know, staff office or city office for facilities to, you know, take care of the grounds, and that's it. So for future use, if we could not do the facility, we don't want the added garbage, noise, parking cars, and everything that comes with a 45-foot building structure. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I think that's it. We have no other public speakers, so are we?
Yes, Mayor.
Your...
No.
We don't have a...
We need to read the title.
Yeah, and I need to read the title into the record. I just realized that we hadn't. So if I may, read the title.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this is 6A, which is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending the City of Sunny Isles Beach Land Development Regulations Official Zoning Map for the property located at 215-185th St., Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, 33160, to amend the zoning district from moderate-density townhouse residential to community facilities pursuant to Code Section 265-4 of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, providing for severability, providing for repealer, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date.
Okay. That's it? We have no other public speakers, so we're going to motion, we have a discussion, any discussion, or can I have a motion? You're out of time. Just kidding.
Just wanted to explain, to come and talk, you need to put out a public comment card.
I didn't want to talk. I just wanted to ask a question, so I didn't realize that was...
Okay, no, I just wanted, I think it'll be the same thing you have to, but I mean...
If she would like to come up and speak, so that we can have your name and, to the record, name and address for the record, please.
I'd just like to say that...
We don't look to dismiss anyone from speaking, and we'd like to have everyone's comments.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't understand. In the past, we've been able to ask questions without signing up, so it was my misunderstanding.
No, no, it's okay. I just wanted to explain.
Appreciate it. So my question is, when you spoke about confusion about public running
of the space, right? I wanted to understand if you were saying that this would be a public park, like all other public parks that we have, that they're run by the city, not that it's something anybody would have to pay dues for or anything like that. So that was my question as to the rezoning. Does it make it, I don't know if a public place means for use by everyone, as opposed to something run by the city that it's free to all the residents?
Ma'am, did you provide your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry. Nidia Garcia, and I'm at 19130 North Bay Road.
Mayor, would you like me to respond?
You can go, but we're, if it's public, it would be open to the public, but certainly Gateway, we have a resident ID program, right, where we have resident ID cards, so Gateway is for the benefit of the residents, the indoor facility. But again, we haven't, we're not that far along.
Okay, so it wouldn't be run by private, a private company?
No, no.
It would be run by the city, and it'd be, of course, you need your ID or whatever, but it would be for use of all the residents?
That's the point of having this zoning, that this is, again, the articulation that this is for a public purpose, that being the case, that it would be for the residents and for the public, and there wouldn't be a private entry fee or a membership fee associated with that.
Okay, that was exactly, because the public could use it, but would have to pay, and that was really what the question that I was trying to get clarity on. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. I think we have no other comments. Any comments from the commission, or we're ready to take a motion, or unless anybody has any comments or questions, I'd like to...
It's simple. We need, it's not useful right now to the city, and we need to rezone it so that it can be of use to the city.
In the future.
Down the road, right. So with that, I would, no, if there's no other comments, I would make a motion. So moved?
Second.
Second?
Yeah, second.
Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Suva-san?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading will be scheduled at a later date.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving to item 7A.
7A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, approving an amendment to the City of Sunny Isles Beach Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map pursuant to the Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment Procedures in Section 163.3187 of Florida statutes for a point, I'm sorry, for a 0.672-acre parcel located at 215-185th St., Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, 33160, from low-to-medium-density residential to community facilities, approving the transmittal of the amendment to the Department of Economic Opportunity and reviewing agencies in accordance with Section 163.3187 of the Florida statutes, providing for severability, providing for repealer, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, this is a companion item for the item that you just voted, but this is regarding our Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. Basically, it's the same property, and we are amending also the map. Currently, it is a low-to-medium-density residential, and we are proposing to change it to community facility. That is going to be the land use. Along with the report, basically, we have to do a level of service. That is how it's called. So every time that you modify something in your comprehensive plan, you have to analyze if you have the potential level of service for what you are proposing. And in this case, we took in consideration that this is going to be a community facility, that it has a restricted covenant, that no residential component is part of it. So we analyzed just the Florida ratio relating to a potential increase in square footage. With that said, we did the traffic analysis, and we did all other services that are provided by the city, and with that analysis, the staff and the consultant are recommending for amending this parcel of property for community facilities. The processes after this first reading, we will have to send it to the state and to other reviewing agencies. We'll get comments... We'll get comments, hopefully, we don't have any for this simple one, and then we'll be back with the second reading of the ordinance. So if you have any comments, questions?
Do you think we'll have the, do you think we'll have it back by the next meeting, or it'll take longer than that?
No, it will, it will take longer. The state only has, it has 45 days, so that will be pushed back into probably two more months.
This goes to the DEO?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, it goes to them.
Okay. I have no comments. I think this is pretty much vetted and discussed, and we're all on the same page. So unless, we have no speaker comments, so...
There's, I don't recall there being any for this one.
Correct. So that being the case, unless anyone has any comments, want to take a motion?
So...
Second. Roll call, call vote?
Commissioner Joseph?
A big I.
Commissioner Suvasan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Second reading will be scheduled once the state returns it.
Item 7B?
7B is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Islands Beach, Florida, amending ordinance number 2021-574, approving the budget amendment number BA 202201 to the city's operating and capital improvement budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year, for the General Fund, Street Maintenance and Construction Fund, Building Fund, Public Art Trust Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Special Projects Fund? Is that correct?
Special Revenue.
Special Revenue Fund. I apologize. Storm Fund and Stormwater Capital Fund, authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date. And just before you start, so I mentioned an additional fund in there because we missed it in the title, so if it is approved, it will be approved as amended.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present this budget amendment. Tiffany Neely is our finance director. She has returned to the city. So I was finance director at the time this was originally being prepared, so I started it, and she helped me finish it, and she'll be posting it upon your approval. So we're here jointly presenting. The purpose of budget amendments each year is, when we start a budget, the budget is an estimate. And as we progress through the year, we typically have anywhere between two and four budget amendments per year that allow us to make modifications for things that happen during the year that couldn't have originally been planned for. The very first budget amendment of the year, which is this one, has one very intentional purpose, and it's the same every year. We use our estimates from end of year to do beginning fund balances and those types of entries. At the time that the first budget amendment is done, the books are closed from the prior fiscal year, the audit's in process, and so we use this one to bring forward all of our fund balances from the prior year. So this one, there goes my, of course, it had to go dim on me so that I couldn't quote. This one records the fund balance carryovers from September 30th of '21 to the new fiscal year, October 1, '21. It also records all our purchase order carryovers. So again, purchase orders don't all close at the end of the year. We have to wait to see what is necessary to carry forward, and carry forward the budget from the prior year to cover those purchase orders. We conduct a lot of routine transfers between accounts, just like in our own personal budgets. We may budget for one thing, and our city manager gave a nice analogy as we were doing various commissioners' meetings, agenda review meetings. When you budget for something, say you're budgeting for a roof, and all of a sudden your grocery bill's higher thanks to our supply chain issues and what's going on in the world, you have to move between accounts. And that's what a lot of our little transfers that you will find in this budget amendment, ours, transfers between accounts to allow for actual expenditures and things that we need to do as a city. In our cover page, you'll find a laundry list of other things that we were covering within it, but the overall budget did increase as a result of all the fund balance carryovers coming in from the previous year. And I will be glad to entertain any questions that you all might have.
Public speaker? We have one public speaker card here. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Thank you. Larissa Svetchen, 19140 Atlantic Boulevard. Hello, everyone. This is Tiffany. So I have a question, because obviously, this isn't clear to most people. There are a few items that were increased substantially, and really, because a lot of people have been asking me, and I'm not able to explain it, for the city manager personnel services, the $284,257, $257 was a huge increase, and then the human resources, salaries, again, $674,000-plus increase, and there's some other much smaller numbers, but those were the two big ones.
Audra?
I will be glad to address those for you.
Thank you.
No problem. Sorry, glasses. Back to the beginning here. So the increases in the city manager's budget were multifold. Obviously, there were termination expenses from your previous administration that were not included in the original budget. That is the most significant portion of that increase.
So that was Chris Rousseau's severance package?
Correct.
That attributes to that large line item?
Correct.
That you're referring to?
And we also, right, and we also did not have, you have the exact same number of personnel, but duties have changed under the current administration, and the, particularly me, my duties currently do not involve the building department, whereas the previous assistant city manager did. So the previous assistant city manager's salary was charged to the building department and the building fund, versus now it's charged to the general fund. So sometimes, the way that duties are aligned require alignment of different dollars in a different manner in order to pay those bills.
And the other, other accrued leave, accrued leave time and so forth for departing, and then...
Correct. And on the HR side, to address Larissa's second question, the HR side accounts for the salary study that we have done, and hopefully, we have not come up with a final plan on how to implement such thing, but if we do, it puts some money aside to allow for the market value study. We have some departments that are dramatically losing staff all the time, and we have lost some very key personnel recently who are sitting in this room and won't be with us soon, and we have to stay competitive, or you will lose some of your key, key staff. So that study is to help us in critical areas.
Just quickly, so the $674,000 was Chris's package?
No.
No, the $284,000, your first line item.
It's not just his, there's, my salary's there, too.
Okay.
So it's a combination of the terminal leave package and severance for the former city manager, as well as my position, ending up in the city manager's budget. And then under the HR budget, that is mostly the salary study.
So it's an increase of about over $4 million, right?
No.
No, not at all. Your numbers are incorrect.
$284,000 on one, and $674,000 on another.
Total.
Mayor, if there's questions, you can speak offline on that.
No, there's no, no...
No, but that's not, this is...
These are the increases.
If you have items, you can, you can present them during your time, but...
I'm not presenting, I fill out an information card, I'm asking...
But, but you're, you're going back and forth about numbers that are not correct, so...
Yeah, thank you. I'll explain it, no problem. There's nothing, there's nothing unusual in this amendment, I just need to explain the numbers. So I'll be glad to sit with Larissa and explain them all.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion?
Any other comments from any of the, any of the Commissioners? Do you have any comments?
I don't.
Any comments about these? These are just, again, this is the, this is the first, this is our first budget amendment, right? And this was a delayed, this was somewhat of a delayed process, correct? Which accounts for the many, the length and the breadth of this?
Correct.
In certain, in certain part?
Correct.
Terrific. Okay. Wonderful. If we have no other comments, no other public speakers, if I can have a motion? There's no, I'm sorry, you're, no, no comments from the audience? No comments, so that if you, you have to fill out a speaker's card and come up to the dais, but I'm sorry, this is a...
Do we need a motion, Mauricio?
We can have a motion, please? Can we have a motion?
First, so moved.
So moved, and second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is an ordinance, Mayor.
You can, you can speak during the citizens forum, if you'd like.
I'd like to ask a question now.
I'm sorry, this, we don't...
Okay, continue.
We're going to continue on. You could, you're more than welcome to speak at the citizens forum.
Why, why do you use public voting? Because what you ask, which is why you have a question.
There's, there's, we're not, we're not entertaining this, but thank you so much for your comments.
You don't have a question? I don't have a question. She's good. Karen?
Mayor, I just recommend that he ask Audra the question. I'm sure she's the one that has the answer. The city commission probably does not have that answer.
Okay. So you're, you're more than welcome to speak with Audra directly, but thank you.
Mayor, before we continue, I just need to do a roll call since this is an ordinance. Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Suvasan?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading, and second reading will be scheduled in April.
Next, next item.
Okay. Yes, just to remind everyone in the public, especially, if you wish to speak on an item, please make sure that you fill out the public speaker card before the item is called, to avoid any disruption.
Thank you.
So the next one is item 7C, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Islands Beach, Florida, amending Section 74-8, standing committees, chairpersons of Article 4, Committees of Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the City of Sunny Islands Beach Code of Ordinances, to revise the meeting schedule of committees, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date. And this is first reading. So Mayor Commissioners, basically, what this ordinance sets out to do is to increase the frequency in which each committee meets. Currently, they're limited to six meetings a year, and again, this would just allow them to meet more frequently, and as the city manager determines.
Any other, any other comment? No, we do have a public, this is 7C, so we do have a public speaker. Can you please state your name and address?
Let me get to the floor.
There you go.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I see you turned me one time like you did now with Greg.
Name and address.
That's not right, but I have card now. What's mean reschedule the meeting all the time was Thursday, last Thursday each month. What I understand from this things has to be changed forever, never, never have been different day, only Thursday. I understand if this time is only for this time, but let keep the way how it used to be, okay? And I think, because somebody told me they call you, and let you, you didn't call back. I think everybody to know, the resident has to know everything what is going on. You have to tell, you represent very well, I like the way. If that's gonna be discussed with the resident, because we vote for you forever, who, for who, but we have to have a respect from you. If the resident is not happy, that's mean you didn't listen them, didn't follow their direction. I have no idea what is going on, but have some issue. Please, my advice, I don't want to be, to say, okay, now, Jerry, you have to do that. Who speak around? Has to be speak in the front of everybody, the same. Because the rumors are going around, and that's not good for you guys. I'm sorry. Rumors are rumors. I don't know how true or not true, but it's going. And like, the manager explained very well. Tonight, I like the way how you explain this very well. The people wants to hear exactly what you say. This property, okay, they're talking about tennis court, basketball, I'm talking and thinking, our area, not Golden Shores only, but anyway, we don't have a gym, any gym. We cannot go. The big building, they have a gym.
Thank, thank you. Can you just state your name and address for the record, please? Thank you, Rumi.
Rumiana Grusdanova, 220-186th Street.
Thank you, thank you, Rumi.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. We have no other public speaker. Just to clarify, this item is for allowing meetings for our designated committees to happen more than six times a year, correct?
Correct. This only applies to committees.
To, to form committees. So if the committees want to meet our new MAPSAC and our new ESAC and some of our existing committees, if they're, if the committees, this gives the flexibility by changing this ordinance to allow for, or changing the code to allow for more meetings than six times, no more than six times a year. So if there are substantive or agenda items, or items for the committee, to the advisory committee to, to consider and recommend to the commission, this allows more flexibility for those particular committees to, to meet on a more frequent basis than what is currently allotted through our code. So I hope that's clear to everyone here.
And if I can just say something into the record, Mayor? So the reason why this month's meeting was changed from Thursday to Tuesday is because of the Jewish holiday, and the same thing will happen next month because of Passover. Passover happens to fall on the day that we would normally have our commission meeting. So next month, our meeting will be on April 12th, which is the Tuesday before the normal Thursday.
Okay.
It makes a lot of sense.
It was all set last year.
Last year, we had some issues.
Correct. So we wanted to correct that for this year.
We plan ahead.
But we're certain, certainly hoping with, you know, we've had the initial workshops on our MAPSAC and our ESAC, and we're hoping that we will have a very robust participation and initiative and recommendations and so forth that will come out of all of these committees and give the, give a greater opportunity for greater engagement and citizen input in our city. And that's the whole impetus behind revising the code to allow for, you know, a greater meeting, a greater meeting process. So with that said, unless we have any other comments?
My only comment is, if we can be consistent with the use of chairman and chairperson, where I caught one chairman, but it's chairperson, and throughout, if we could just check that to be consistent.
That's the lawyer in you.
Can't help it.
I would just like to go on the record, if I may, to say that I am not, I'm one that is not hot on these committees themselves, that I believe strong Commissioners should be able to look at issues and make recommendations at this open forum that can be moved forward and just as a matter of saving time and moving forward with issues for the city.
I, I would...
Rather than having to go to committees.
I would respond to that. It's not that we have to go to committees, but the committee work is important as a matter of civic engagement, because how else do you, I mean, not how else, I mean, there's other ways, but it's, it's a very productive way to bring people in, to be engaged, to learn about the issues that are going on in the city. to bring people in, to be engaged, to learn about the, the issues that are going on in the city, and it's, it's a, it's a venue for building future leadership, as opposed to not having that, and then it's, it's, people are floating around.
But we don't always.
Please don't interrupt me. People are floating around trying to, um, you know, learn and reach out, and it, and they're all very, it's all one, every person for themselves, whereas when you provide a committee, you, you're, you're helping create that community. And we don't have to go to them, but we're giving them the opportunity to, to give their feedback to us. And if we like it, we take it, and if we don't, we don't, we're not bound by it. But it's a wonderful opportunity for, for people of the community to, to learn and engage.
No, I understand. My feeling is that we could have suggestion boxes. We have a lot of smart, brilliant people within the city. If we can get them to, uh, voice their opinions to us through suggestion boxes that we can move forward on, we could save six months, four months, eight months in moving projects forward, rather than waiting for committees to bring us recommendations.
Right, but then you're denying the community the opportunity to engage and learn.
No, because they have opinion boxes that we could work from.
But then only people with ideas will be providing the, the, the suggestions, as opposed to being in an environment where they can learn from each other, right? But they're not, they're not mutually exclusive. They can, we can have both, but I, the committee is important. I'm sorry?
The people that are on the committees, who has vetted them?
We've had a vetting, we, they, we've had a vetting process. We've absolutely had a vetting. They provide their CVs, they provide their background, references and so forth, so there is been some, there has been a, a vetting process, so.
I would, I would just like to be on the record to say that for the progress of moving, um, recommendations forward, I believe that the commissioners can, um, through open forums such as this, with recommendations and suggestions, we can move a lot faster to, um, to have progress.
Jerry, would you like your voice to be in a box, or to have the opportunity to be in a committee discussing with other people? If you were not a commissioner, would you rather to have your ideas and your opinions in a box, or be able to be part of a committee? You particularly?
Me? I would, if I were not a commissioner?
Correct.
I would be sitting in the audience here. We don't have a lot of participation, unfortunately, and I would be making recommendations.
But that's not my question.
Or if there were suggestion boxes throughout the city, I would be putting my recommendations in a suggestion box or calling my commissioner with suggestions.
You won't be part of the committee. If you were having the opportunity to be part of a committee, would you like it if you're not a commissioner?
I've never been, I've never been on a committee. I've never looked to be on a committee, for that reason.
I guess. Well, we've had a, we've had a strong history of a committee process and committee engagement. We've had the CAC, we've since moved to, you know, substance, substantive areas such as sustainability and mobility, and, you know, this, this particular measure is just to give the flexibility to meet more often than six times a year and not have that limiting factor. It's not about the efficacy of a committee versus an individual, you know, suggestion or, or a message box. It's really about the, you know, the functioning of a committee, again.
No, I understand.
And nothing prevents individuals, by the way. It's, you know, the, the Jerry's of the world, right? If you don't wanna, if you, if you have that ability to reach out to, to commissioners and you wanna have that rapport and those conversations, we can still do that. So it, it's not mutually exclusive, and we can have both.
Like the emails. We receive emails from the public and the residents all the time, so that's kind of the box, you know? It's called now email.
We'll always, we'll always respond as commissioners to, you know, the requests of the public, and we'll always have some, but this is a much more organized, uh, format by which, you know, certain initiatives or certain, uh, you know, focal points or substantive areas can be explored.
No, I understand.
Such as the resiliency and the beach, you know, the beach, the beach access and so forth. That's not, you know, anybody could drop a, a message in a box and say, hey, I would love a compacted sand, uh, you know, beach walk, but this is, you know, again, having the committee, giving the flexibility for a committee to meet more often and be able to, you know, further those recommendations. It's, it's just, it's, it's a different, it's a different pathway for that.
No, I understand, but I just wanna say that just for myself, and I, I was elected, I, I'm elected now. I believe my commission is thirty-plus months. Within thirty months, I, I want to achieve as much as I can, not be waiting for a committee to give me suggestions. I've, I've taken the initiative to work on the homeless problem in the city, to try to, um, get, I'm going to be working to get a farmer's market in the city, to have a, um, a film festival in the city, to add culture for our residents, and I don't need to wait for a committee to do those.
Well, those, 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 again, the formed committee are for narrow, they're specific. At the current state, those are specific, it's like an SPE, a specific kind of purpose entity. So, again, the sustainability, the historic preservation, so on and so forth, those initiatives, you, you may have certain initiatives and they're outside of that, of the purview of those specific committees.
No, I understand, but here, let's.
But you're not, that doesn't, it, one is not exclusive, or one does not preclude the other.
I understand, but let's take, for example, the mobility committee. They were talking about, um, how can we make our, our cross, street crossings safer? Well, I've already presented that in my platform when I was running for mayor and commissioner, to have crossing guards. And now it's come up that we have PSAs that can also be hired as crossing guards.
Right, but we, we're just, we're just putting a crossing, Eddie Santiago, our interim chief, just indicated, we're putting a crossing guard on, uh, on the bridge on one hundred and seventy-four street, so it's not as if, if they're not mutually.
But now we're actually presenting that.
No, no, we, we, I think everybody here shares that. This is just a mechanism to expand or give greater flexibility to our formed committees to be able to meet and, you know, and conduct, you know, their, their, their committee op, operation or so forth, right?
I understand. I just like to, you know, I'm an expediter in my business, I'm an expediter, and I like to move on, you know, when I have good suggestions, I like to act on them.
But I, I don't think a committee would impede you from moving.
Correct.
No, I understand, but.
You'll be, let's say, blocked by a committee, or you'll have to wait for, not blocked, but like retained, you know, or held back by a committee. I, I just see a committee as perhaps, you know, meeting, bringing some fresh ideas, talking to the community, and then coming back to us, but the way I see it, I could go ahead and have some ideas on my own, present it to city staff, and perhaps have it discussed here and have it implemented.
Yes, so, and that's what I'm saying. If we have, we're all bright commissioners, we can hash things out right here in ten minutes, let's say, and then act on them. And, and move a lot faster on issues for the, for the residents.
I think the committees, for instance, we, we have some experts, like, you know, with the, with the MAPSAC and the other, uh, committee, we have some experts that perhaps bring some skill sets and knowledge that we necessarily don't have, that perhaps we have the general idea, but they could come back to us with the specifics on how to implement that, or what resources to utilize, or where to go in order to, you know, put that into motion. So that's, that's the way I see it. I see it as, you know, having more people involved, also like the vice mayor said, you're involving, um, the community more. I mean, listen, I, I, I think it's a good idea. If it works, great, and if it doesn't, then we'll have to revisit that. And, uh, that's how I see it.
Okay.
And give it a try.
And with that, did we have, we didn't have a public comment?
Uh, just, we had one public speaker. One public comment, and that's it. We have no more. So with that.
I, I'll, uh, move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, roll vote.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuvasan?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading will be scheduled for April.
We are up to nine A.
Nine A is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending chapter six of the city of Sunny Hills Beach, code of ordinances, to provide for the establishment of a youth advisory committee, stating the purpose, powers, and duties of the committee, providing for member qualifications, providing for repealer, providing for servability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date, and this is second and final reading.
Well, in the spirit of our amazing committees and civic engagement, um, we talked about this in the last commission meeting, and the reality is that our city population is getting younger by the day. Just, we have like families with their children moving to the city, so the purpose is like for young people to advise and make recommendations of the, to the commission of the things that they, they care about, what they wanna see, activities, programs, events, et cetera. And like Commissioner Lama was saying, and Vice Mayor, to form the leaders of the future. So that's the idea of this committee, and, um, so I hope that we can approve it. Also, sorry, there's other municipalities that they have, uh, very similar committees, like Aventura, Cutler Bay, Coral Gables, Miami Beach, between others. So we will be catching up to these municipalities.
Okay, so the idea is to engage and, and have youth participate. My, through a formalized committee and make recommendations about whether it's programming or activities or.
Events.
Events for, specifically for youth. My only question is, how are we going to appoint this committee? So I see on this particular, um, ordinance, the composition and qualification i, of members are, the, any middle school to high school age student living within the city will be eligible.
I would like to make an amendment to make it to only high school age, uh, children.
No middle schoolers?
No.
That cuts out ten percent of our population.
Well, I know, but, you know, like, we were before in our previous conversations, like, uh, because they have to respect the sunshine law, et cetera, I think high school students, that, um, will be easier for them. In other municipalities also, they do afford high school age students.
So how would we, so, so it's ea, I suppose it's easier to reach middle schoolers because they're here in our school. If we wanted to even advertise for this committee, how are we gonna reach them? Are they reading these emails, or are we gonna have to put something on TikTok to say?
No, not TikTok, no.
Let's form the youth committee, and, you know, how?
No, the, the same platform that we're using, like with the Facebook and also Instagram, we put it in the website. The high school students are, like, they would surprise you. They are very aware of what's going on, what's going on with the city, et cetera. So I think we, we have a big also population, even though we don't have a high school here, we have high school age kids. So, uh, that, I would like to see it for high school, but if you guys want to include the middle schoolers, I'm okay with that.
What do you see as some of the, you know, programming objectives? You see, you know, they're making recommendations for what activities or what?
For everything, for sports activities, programs, things they are passionate about, it can include things in the environment, or basically, everybody has like their own ideas, so I think if we have a pool of different children with different, uh, outcomes, we will have a different outcome, according to them, yeah.
So, you know, there's something that I've spoken about, and that we, we've, uh, we've addressed, and that's the team green, the idea, you know, to do that. So again, we have a sustainability committee, but certainly, uh, you know, the, the environment, or, you know, or, or athletic. And so what has been the experience, does anybody know what the experience has been with some of these other municipalities and having these youth committees? Anybody have any, any information about that, or how that's worked?
I've, I've spoken to some other municipalities that do have a youth advisory committee, and it's basically, it, it functions the same way as any other committee. They make recommendations to the commission on events that the municipality can hold, how to improve existing events that the city has, so it's, it's purely advisory, is, is what they would be doing.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Uh, we have no, we have no public speaker.
I, I, I like the idea of keeping it broader, uh, middle school to high school. Uh, I mean, we don't know who the, you know, what the applicant pool is gonna look like, so, and we've never had this before, so I don't think it makes sense to limit it, um, at the onset. I mean, we can, if, you know, depending on what the applicant pool looks like, we can make that determination, um, down the road. But, um, yeah, I think it's, it's important to be building leadership, and this is also gonna be a good opportunity for the, um, for those young resumes and those applications. So. I would, motion.
So moves, you have a motion?
Before we go to the second, just to clarify the record, the ordinance is being adopted as it's presented.
Yes, yes, yeah, no amendment.
So now we just need a second.
I second, yeah.
Well, no, you moved?
No, she moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, perfect. Okay, so this is a roll call. Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuvasan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes, reluctantly.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
How many committees are we up to now? How many? Let's, uh, let's, let's, let's have a running list.
Six.
We have the MAPSAC, ESAC.
The historic preservation board, the public arts advisory, um, the, I, I mentioned that one. The, um, the youth advisory committee, and we still have a city advisory committee.
That we haven't yet, okay. So, that's work, huh?
Yeah.
That's work, okay.
Maybe a senior committee is coming to.
Okay. Item ten A.
Ten A is a resolution approving an agreement with Millennium Products for the purchase and installation of automated license plate recognition systems.
Good evening once again, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. The police department is seeking approval to enter into contract with Millennium Products, Inc. for the installation of automatic license plate readers at two sites in the area of one hundred and seventy-fourth street in the amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and nineteen cents. The two installation sites were strategically selected and will alert patrol officers and investigators of wanted vehicles traversing the area. Additionally, it will provide investigators leads that will undoubtedly help in criminal investigations. I just wanna go into Friday, March eleventh, early morning, license plate reader alerted our patrol of a vehicle involved in a shooting in North Miami Beach, and because of that, we're successfully to take the subject into custody, um, by the public storage, and the gun was recovered. So they really do work. Commission previously approved the utilization of forfeiture funds for this project on January twentieth of twenty-two.
How many license plate readers, LPRs, do we, do we have in the city?
Good question. I'm gonna defer to the police.
At different, all different locations?
Every entrance and exit, and including Golden Shores.
And then, this, so this is all paid for through the forfeiture funds, right? All of these LPRs have been established through the forfeiture fund?
Yes.
What's, do we have a running balance of that, or?
In excess of five million dollars.
So we still got a couple of coins in that piggy bank, right?
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So let's take, um, Golden Shores. At every entrance to Golden Shores, there's a license plate reader now?
Yes. Yes.
Every entrance, okay.
And it's. And exit. And, and exit, and it's worked.
Right, yeah, but being that there is no front license plate, that's what I was asking. So if there, if there weren't, um, one at every entrance, then someone could actually drive in and drive out without it, because the cameras are pointed to catch the real license plate, correct?
Right, that's, that's why we have the entrance and exit covered.
Yeah, Chief, uh, Mayor, we don't, we don't wanna discuss all of the specifics of our license plate. Yeah, Chief, eh, Mayor, we don't, we don't wanna discuss all of the specifics of our license plate readers, but let's just say we have the city covered eh at all points.
At all points, so, okay.
So is it a detriment, eh, in your opinion, to not have front license plates?
Honestly, I haven't thought about it, so it doesn't matter to me either way. The, the rear license plates have been working excellent with license plate readers, and the front, I don't know how it would really affect the license plate readers, because they captured the, the rear tag.
Right, but if the state were to initiate a front license plate, it would allow us to maybe eh set up equipment to catch people on their cell phones and to give us an additional ability that we don't have now, correct?
Potentially.
But currently, they're just for crime, for, for cr- cr- crime surveillance and so, so forth, correct? That's the, that's the, that's the, the main purpose of this.
Yes, crime prevention.
Crime prevention, okay.
Thank you.
Great. I think we're, thank you so much, um. No public comments, and so take a, take a motion? Do you have a motion?
I just wanna comment that I like forfeiture funds.
I like, yes.
We, we approve it using forfeiture funds.
Yes.
You were gonna say, Fabio?
No, no, I was gonna make the motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Ten B is a resolution approving an agreement with Port Consolidated Inc. for the purchase of gasoline and diesel fuel for the city's fleet and equipment.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commission, um, this item is for an agreement with Port Consolidated. Um, we were previously using them, our agreement with them expired, we didn't have any additional renewals, but City of Pompano Beach had put out a bid, awarded that bid to Port Consolidated, um, as the lowest responsive bidder, so we are looking to piggyback that contract. This would be for a five-year period, um, for a total amount of two so- two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
No comments?
No comment.
No comments. Diesel fuel. But we do, we do eh, we do ultimately wanna wean off of diesel fuel, right? But the, there, those are the realities of our, of our transportation.
Yeah, for now, we would, we would definitely need to set up some sort of infrastructure if we were gonna go eh in a more green way, so that we could be prepared in case of an emergency, some sort of declared hurricane, anything like that. We need to have that infrastructure in place if we're gonna go battery and electric.
Okay.
Um, this fuel is also for the generator for the emergency services of this building.
Okay. Do you have a motion? No other comments, motion, so moved, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item ten C.
Ten C is a resolution approving minor updates to the city's Title VI nondiscrimination policy and plan.
So, Mayor, Commission, um, this actually is, um, before you to be approved in substantially the same form. It was pointed out, there's section twelve, we did not include the MAP SAC. This is a Title VI program specifically for the community shuttle bus service. It's for equality, and we had it previously, we have to renew it every three years, and, um, we will amend that section to include MAP SAC.
Thank you. Good catch. Okay, so this is just a standard, this is just a standard, um, procedure for this type of, from a procurement standpoint, right? For our shuttle buses, because we get, we get monies for
Right, yes.
the running of our shuttle buses, right? Okay. And, um, this is just a, a standard, um, Title VI plan?
Yes, it also keeps us compliant with LAP, which is for any federally funded grants.
Okay. So I've noticed that, um, there's a, this analysis of serving all the different languages, um, so if you wanna speak to that, um, in terms of how we communicate with our residents and different?
Correct, um, we are required to have a survey that shows what our, um, residents, the makeup, the demographic makeup of our residents are, and what languages they speak. Uh, we recently had the, um, for the rebranding, we did that, that study, and, um, the majority was English, second was Spanish. So when we translate our flyers, um, our community shuttle bus map is actually in three languages. Our regular map for tourists or residents who wanna see everything on the map, um, when we produce those things, we, we translate them for that purpose.
And our ridership currently on our, on our shuttle buses, I know we're talking about future on-demand type services, I know we're, we're talking about that, but at least for our shuttle buses and what, what our, what our ridership is.
I'm sorry, Sylvia, do you have off the top of your head?
So, um, we average between five and six thousand riders per month.
And of how many buses running, we have three buses per day?
Three per day, Monday through Friday, two on Saturday, and one on Sunday.
That's, that's tremendous, that's a pre- big ridership. What, what percentage of that is with, with the kids going to school and back, or the kids taking those buses?
The one in the morning, um, so I, I would not do it justice, but it's probably somewhere around ten percent, I would guess, is for the kids at the early morning drop-off at school and the late afternoon.
Okay, alright, thank you very much. So this is just a compliance measure, um, too. And with that, if we, unless we have any other comments?
I just wanted to clarify something, just so that we don't have the impression that there's an extra school bus. Okay, so, um, there, there is an, an age restriction, right? I'm sorry, Sylvia, you're gonna get your steps in today.
Sylvia, I think you're exercising.
Okay, so we, we can't just be loading our kindergartners on our city buses?
Correct, so, um, the buses are first come, first served, um, because we can't be like checking IDs on little kids, we go by red shirts and blue shirts. So the bus drivers know, if they have a blue shirt, that means they're a middle schooler, um, they can get on the bus without a parent or guardian. If they have a red shirt on, that means that they're younger than middle school, they, they have to have a parent or guardian with them.
That is very smart. And efficient.
I like that.
Yeah.
That's good, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to see the utility.
Of uniforms.
Utilization, the utilization of these, of these shuttle buses, okay.
I think we're, yeah, exactly, no, I think we're, we're done with this issue, yeah.
I think we've eh, we've discussed that, okay, so do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
What are you saying, Tom?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're on item eh twelve A, correct? And that's discussion regarding electric scooter. So we did receive a recent comment, um, but we have all, I am sure we all have received comments of recent paths about the electric scooters and our various sidewalks and so forth, so.
Right, so this is in, in part a response to, eh, comments that I received, uh, mostly the impression, you know, people who are upset, who almost get hit, or, or they're, they're with their small child, and then a, a motorized scooter comes by and, and it becomes uncomfortable. And so the, the bottom question is, what are you doing about it? And so, eh, you know, I, I read some of the ordinances, I reached out to interim chief, and I know, you know, it's the last item, I should've warned you about this in our meeting. Uh, and, um, so we, you know, we've gone through the, um, to, you know, review the ordinances and talked about what we can do, because there's the enforcement part, but we can only enforce what's in the ordinances, and then we have to talk about whether that's practical and what that covers. And a lot of this only really applies to Collins and one sixty-third street, but these incidents are, are happening along North Bay Road, you know, on, you know, to, going to and from school. So, eh, with that said, I, I would invite, um, the two gentlemen in the back, if you wanted to come and, and tell us and answer that question, what are we doing about it?
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, thank you for having us up here. So I'm gonna start off, um, Sergeant Javier Estebes, he's our, our traffic sergeant, and, um, this past Monday, we sat in a meeting with the school resource officer Ruiz, the principal, um, Ms. Mesa, we had our media present, um, Sylvia was present, and, um, Sandra Block was also present, and she's also involved in, um, pedestrian and, and bike safety with helmet fitting. And we worked together to come up with a solution of, of an educational campaign. And I'm gonna let Sergeant Javier Estebes take it from here.
Good evening, how are you? Um, as far as the ordinance goes, and seeing the kids in the scooters, eh, all of you see me out there on a motorcycle every single day, eh, it's difficult, it's difficult to go up to a kid on a scooter and tell him, hey, you can't be here, get on the street. Um, I'm, we're not gonna do that. Eh, Collins is very congested, um, if we see kids acting in an unsafe manner, doing something egregious, or anyone for that matter, then tha- that's a different story. And as far as what we're trying to do, is we're gonna try to take the educational approach. I think that's the best way to handle this, eh, with the school and with all the kids. We've come up with, we're gonna implement a program where we're gonna hand out flyers, eh, we're gonna have a back-to-school biking day on May thirteenth, I believe?
May thirteenth.
Yes.
May is eh, the National Bike Month.
Bike Month, and we're gonna have a back-to-school day, we're gonna address the helmet law, eh, we're gonna have someone in here looking over the kids' bikes and scooters for safety issues. We're gonna incorporate the, eh, cadet program that's at the school with Sergeant Ruiz. We spoke to her at our meeting with the, eh, cadets that she has over there. We're gonna make a big push to try to educate all the kids and send things home. We're gonna go through the, the school, Principal Mesa told us, we'll be able to utilize the Do- it's called Dojo?
Class Dojo.
Class Dojo, where they send all the, eh, emails to the parents, and we'll be able to reach them that way. Our goal is to, maybe even, eh, Sylvia brought up a good point, changing the direction that they travel to school with, to keep them away from the Main Thoroughfare, eh, one, seven, two streets, obviously, the break-off, unless they go through the pedestrian bridge. But just give them different options, different ideas, bring things to light. Eh, and also, to have a good interaction with the kids as police officers in twenty-twenty-two, eh, it's important to have good interaction, positive interaction with the kids. And I, I really feel that by doing this, i- it will really have a big effect on, on the issue that we have.
And are we gonna be doing, um, the helmets?
We're gonna be doing helmet fittings, we'll be doing, eh, the bike and scooter safety, we'll be talking to them about lights after dark.
So Sandra Block and Sergeant Norby Alvarez are certified to fit the helmets. We just, um, just yesterday ordered three hundred and seventy-five bike helmets, and they were actually shipped yesterday, so hopefully we're gonna get them soon. And our goal is to have, um, appointment only, one-on-one with a parent and a child at the police station to fit the helmet, because it starts with the parents at home, the education of the parents to pass on to the kids, that will be a huge help, and we're gonna be doing that, so we're gonna incorporate the helmet fitting, um, the, like I said, the Bike to School Day, the cadets, um, crossing guards, code enforcement, it's gonna be a team effort to do this. Car pickup, car drop-off, we're gonna hand out the flyers to the parents. I mean, we have, we have a lot of ideas, and I, and I think it's gonna be very successful, and this is something we wanna start, um, next week, which is spring break.
Right.
And I heard there's gonna be like a, like a, some kind of a poster contest?
So yes, so we wanna get the kids engaged, um, for the bike, the, the bike ride to school with the cops. It's gonna be us and Miami Dade School Police, and, um, we're gonna have the cadets involved, and it'll be a poster contest. Um, so, you know, the kids are gonna make posters, um, the best educational, um, or safety poster involving scooters and bikes, um, will win a prize, you know, we'll have prizes to, to get them involved. Also, the Bike to School Day is not just bicycles, we're gonna include the scooters.
Excellent.
Now, I have a question, have we had incidents where people have been injured, actually injured, eh, by scooters on the sidewalk?
Eh, by scooters on the sidewalk, that I know of, we've had, eh, two eh on the sidewalk. But when you take that into account with all the kids going back and forth, eh, and, and adults for that matter, we have a lot of, eh, construction workers that take them, they've been pretty good about following the rules, I gotta say.
Right.
Eh, it's, it's like a drop in the bucket, to be honest.
Okay, so it's not that much of a hazard as we're assuming it is?
Well, i- it, it's not that much of a hazard that we know of, but the potential's always there. Um, we wanna make sure that if something does happen, we have the best interest of the, the child in this case. Eh, sixteen and under is a state law to have a helmet. Eh, we just wanna make sure that, you know, we, we address everything with them, and I think the biggest thing is to get them away from Collins Avenue, and we have, we've made it to where you can go anywhere in the city from one sixty-third up north eh, and take the backroads and, and kinda stay away from the congestion. And I think by doing that, eh, eh, people feel safer. Eh, the pedestrians also see it, and the pedestrians just don't feel safe. And we're also gonna address the pedestrian safety by limiting or, or lowering the number of scooters, hopefully, on Collins Avenue.
And also courtesy, courtesy, which is, um, you know, there's not much of that going around lately.
Yeah, correct, eh, but again, it's, it's more, eh, the safety for the kids.
And the, the bottom line, I think, is, is that you have a lot of kids on these motorized, um, scooters who don't understand that there's rules, they just don't know.
And, and also.
And, and that goes to the civility, right? If they don't, if they, they may not even realize they're doing anything wrong, but if everybody kind of literally stays in their lane, eh, then, then that'll, that'll help with, with the, the close calls and all, and the, the upset resident phone calls and emails that we get.
It, it's difficult to get kids away from scooters, i- it's very convenient. As we obviously all know, this is a very vertical city, eh, people live in apartment buildings. It's easier to transport a scooter upstairs, on whatever floor you're on, plug it, come back down. In the summer, it gets real hot, you don't have to pedal a bicycle. Um, a- and quite frankly, the scooters are very affordable. They range anywhere from a hundred dollars to, you get a real fancy one for over a thousand.
Right.
But, you know, they're convenient, the kids like them. And why not try to bridge that gap?
I'm also aware that a lot of the Airbnbs are using these for their renters.
Correct, and there's also programs throughout Dade County, and the city of Miami had one, where they were actually, the city was putting out the scooters, and you can go and with your phone, just, eh, rent them, it was real simple.
But we do have an, a pre-existing ordinance on the books, right? We just, it's just a question of, you know, enforcing, but that.
But it only applies to Collins.
That's correct, it applies to Collins Avenue, 'cause I'm the one who, I'm the one who did that, who created that ordinance, right?
Maybe we need to extend that at some point if the, um, if this doesn't work, if the programs don't work, or maybe a permit fee also, if we have to go to a permit fee.
We could put a tag in for a scooter.
That may limit the number of scooters.
Permit fee, a timer, but eh, the point is, the, the point is, there is an ordinance, it's just a, a question of how one enforces it, right? And that ordinance is limited to Collins Avenue, so just the reality is, the electric or any type of scooter, they are prohibited from Collins Avenue. Now, where the scooters go outside of Collins, that's, that's a separate issue, and the enforcement of that, that's also, I know you don't wanna give ten-year-olds tickets, right?
No, we don't.
That's what it is, right?
The bicycles are also allowed, I mean, eh, if, everyone should be, back to your point with the courtesy and everything, eh, it's, it's just, how am I gonna let a kid on a scooter who's following the rules and, eh, eh, giving way to pedestrians, how am I gonna kick them off the sidewalk and let a bicycle go by? It's, it's difficult from a human standpoint, and being a father of two kids, I, I don't wanna do that. So we try to extend them as long as they're doing the right thing and following the rules, and I think this is a good way to reach them, to kinda, just kinda open their eyes.
And, now, I did even receive a, eh, you, you also received that a resident complained about even the bicycles on Collins Avenue, but, you know, the alternative is, is somewhat onerous, right?
Right.
To be on, to have a bicycle on Collins, even though we have the striped areas, right?
Right.
But we do have a, we do have a passageway in the back streets, right?
Correct.
The bicycle routes.
Our, our intent are, what we're trying to do is more for the, the kids, I mean, to be quite honest, just to make them aware and keep them safe.
Because forcing them to get on the street is, really should not be an option. Like, we don't wanna, I don't wanna take a ten-year-old off a sidewalk and put him on the street, like, that's not, that can't be the. Like, that's not, that can't be the, where our ordinances take us. Like, that can't be.
So there's not, that's basically, it's in, it's in the category of really education, right?
For nowadays, we'll try this approach. We'll see where it takes us. But I think that's, that's the best alternative for right now. And I think it's a great time with the vacation coming up. And, you know, the end of the year, it's gonna be a real good thing for us to-
We can re-press it as it goes.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I know it's a long day for you, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanna give a quick update on-
Quick update. Go for it, go for it, Alex. You've been quiet all night. So let's hear it from, let's hear it from Alex.
Anyhow, so the Florida Legislature, at the meeting in Tallahassee, though, we talked about different deep bills that have been proposed up in Tallahassee, the Senate and the House. Also, Vice Mayor has written about this in her newsletter, named Aenda. With a J.
A J.
Aenda, yeah. So, but anyhow, so we've talked about some of these bills. One is the local ordinances. Fortunately, this failed, okay? So this ordinance would have required for municipalities to come up and to put together a business impact analysis for any ordinance that we're gonna pass. So basically, that would have been one, let's say, one piece of the legislation that would have tied our hands if we wanted to pass ordinances. And also, let's say if we passed an ordinance, it would have required municipalities to suspend enforcement if any civil action was brought up to us based on the ordinance validity and grounds that is arbitrary or unreasonable for any business. So this is a win-for-home rule. Imagine if we wanted to sit here and pass an ordinance. And for every ordinance we have to pass, we have to come up with an analysis that, you know, talk about what type of business impact it would have on local businesses. So that is a win-for-home rule. Another one, which I'm very happy that it passed. Now, granted, this one itself needs to be signed by the governor, but this is the regulation of smoking by counties and municipalities. And this basically will restrict smoking within the boundaries of any public beach or park that any municipality or county owns. So this is, this is a good, big win. Now, there's only a caveat. It was amended that it just, it just did not apply for any cigars, basically, for any smoking devices that not, that did not have-
Filters, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So we're just waiting for the governor to do the right thing. It's on his desk, and hopefully he will sign that. And then-
Now, let me ask you-
Sure.
Alex, does that allow us to extend the non-smoking to, you know, restaurants?
The way the bill is, no.
So it would have to be amended?
It will have to be amended, yeah.
And doesn't give the cities any opportunity to do anything else?
Not that I know, no.
This was just about parks and beaches. That the cities would- This is, this is removing the preemption. So we used to have the authority to regulate smoking on beaches and our parks. Then the state came and said, no, you know what? We'll take that, thank you. And now it's restoring that. So it's not adding any new authority. It's just giving municipalities what they used to have.
And we can't fill our oats and try to go further and have them say, no, you can't do it?
Well, no, because this bill itself, as long as it does not go against any, any county or state ordinance.
No, that would be unenforceable.
So the state would come to us and say-
No, if you tried to punish someone who did that, they'd get thrown out of court.
So we couldn't do anything regarding limiting smoking at restaurants?
No, we're preempted, we're preempted in this, as the Vice Mayor just said. This removes one of those preemptions. But it's solely to parks and beaches.
So we have to look for a further amendment?
Correct.
Not amendment, you would need new legislation. You just, it's something that would need to, I mean, it's over. Like, this legislative session's over. So we're lucky we got this far, yeah. But that's something that can be introduced next year by some-
I'm sure there's great consensus amongst the commission to, you know, to, for that, for that initiative to ban smoking on the beaches.
Yeah, we'll just need to lobby the state legislators.
Well, first, we would have to agree-
And we can always request that to our restaurants. You know, like, please try to do the right thing for, for the people. It doesn't mean that we can force them to do it. It can be a request.
Is it a draft that to present to restaurants within our city that, that the commission would suggest that to the health benefits of our residents?
Like a recommendation?
As a recommendation? And see if they're willing to go along?
I don't see why not.
If that's the will of the commission, yes, we could do that. Could also post something on social media. But whatever you think and you advise us, we could do something like that.
Do we have a consensus as to whether everyone would be for that?
I'd like to discuss this further. I think we're a little tired.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we can't dictate. We can, we can, we can't, we can't, right?
Yeah, I'll discuss it. I'm open to it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm open to discussion, but-
Committee to-
No, no.
No, this is not a committee. This is not a-
There's no, there's no ban on smoking.
But, no, but this is, you know, they just made an update.
Myra, one less thing for you to deal with, right?
Anyhow. So the other, the other bill that unfortunately did not pass, and that is very near and dear to our heart, is the aggressive careless driving.
Oh, it did not pass.
It did not pass, that was as of yesterday. It was withdrawn, it was postponed and then withdrawn from consideration from both the Senate and the House.
That's the Anthony Resnick Act. The Anthony Resnick.
Does the Anthony Resnick Act.
Did the Wheelie and the Donuts Act, did that pass?
I did not look into that one. But we could-
Is the behind it not passing?
Well, I know there was pushback from some law enforcement agencies. And, you know, also the law itself, you know, perhaps, I don't know. There was pushback from law enforcement, I heard.
That's too bad.
And from perhaps the legal system, you know.
The condo, the condo bill didn't pass either, much to my surprise. So maybe they'll have a special session. But that was something that was much heralded, you know, for Champlain Towers. But that didn't pass either.
But I think, I think it went through some committees. This one itself went through some committees. It kind of progressed. And I feel, you know, that, you know, next year, we need to, we need to tackle this again. We need to keep pushing. And this is how, you know, legislation works. You know, we need to keep trying, trying until, you know, we get what, what is needed for the community.
It got along, I mean, it got pretty far. It unfortunately didn't cross the finish line. But a lot of pieces of legislation don't even make it to a committee. And this one, this-
The great majority of them fail.
So this one did on its first shot. And a lot of legislation, you know, gets reintroduced on a, on a different year. We have elections coming up. And so, you know, there may be a change in the makeup of, of those voting on, on the legislation. So we, you know, if, if it gets reintroduced, we may get a different outcome, you know, the next time. But you just, I mean, I was, I was hoping, but, I think we all were.
And I think, you know, I think we need to also strategize a little bit about, you know, looking at other communities that have these issues and have high-traffic areas and trying to like form a block to kind of really, you know, put more pressure on, on the state legislators.
Things like aftermarket mufflers, noise issues, traffic issues, speed readers, speed readers on public, on state roadways. That would be great. Okay, but we're, we wanna hasten up a little bit. We've had some very patient residents here. We have the Citizens Forum.
Susan had one more thing.
So we have, we have one, no more?
There was something I needed to discuss for, to get some consensus on. The Ritz property. After the January meeting, we were tasked with seeing if that Ritz trailer was viable to keep for city property for any city use. We had the building department inspect it. They came back and there was a whole list of things that we would have to do. It wasn't practical to keep it. So with that in mind, we used a previous resident survey that we, the Cultural Community Services Department had taken. And we consulted with our recreation department, our city engineer. They laid it out. We could fit a tennis court and a pickleball, a small restroom, which would also service the intercoastal park, North and South, and parking. So that's our recommendation. If you would like to consider that, if, if there's a consensus that that's something you wanna do, we will engage with a firm to get a quote to do that and bring it to you in April.
Sounds wonderful.
On the south side of the city?
That's on the south side of the city, at least it's a start.
Yes, it's a .71 acre site. We would have a lot of landscape buffer for, you know, Collins Avenue and the road going in and out of Arlen House. But it would also, you know, tie in, which is the ultimate goal, of tying in that linear park at the south end of the city.
Now, we'd also have to look at the condos that have their own tennis courts. How do we keep them from going and using this?
You don't. You don't.
Where it might be open to other city residents.
They're, they're public. But again, it's pickleball, there's really not-
In a sense of fairness, how do you, how do you regulate?
The fairness component is that everybody's taxes pay for it. And everybody has access. And if you don't wanna use the one in your building, you don't. I mean-
But right now, we can't go and use tennis courts at Arlen House.
It's private property versus public property. So if it's public property, it's open.
But you can move to Arlen House if you choose to.
No, I understand that. No, but I'm just saying, there, we have to consider certain issues.
If it's public, it's public, though, Jerry.
No, I understand.
But, but yeah, no, my question would be, why, why tennis and not basketball? You know, but I guess we can, we can consider that down the road. Yeah, it's the same sort of footprint, I mean, right?
So we did look at, you know, of the list of things that people said they wanted.
Oh, I see.
Basketball was on there and it was high. But we do already have basketball as an option. Whereas tennis is not an option at all. So that, that was the, that was the difference.
Basketball in Pelican, that's what you mean.
Basketball, Pelican has to do with basketball.
Because in my perspective, it, you know, in terms of usage, more people play basketball at the same time than tennis, right? Tennis is two or four for the same footprint. Whereas you can have the pickup games or like, you know, a lot more, I don't know, in terms of the level of interest. But we don't have to decide that now. I mean, obviously, it's a flat, a flat surface with a-
In the tennis one, they can have also the basketball loops on the sides. So it can be used for basketball and tennis. Can it be like a multipurpose?
We can definitely ask them to do something like that.
Yes, so it can be used either for basketball or tennis, even volleyball.
And pickleball is, of course, a very popular and-
Which one's pickleball?
Yeah, I don't know pickleball.
Which one's pickleball?
Pickleball is a smaller court.
Would you?
Pickleball's, pickleball's a smaller court. You can fit more, in the same area, you can fit more pickleball.
But what is it?
Pickleball is, it's a combination, I'd love to have Colin talk about it. It's his favorite sport.
It's a paddleball, tennis.
Colin, okay, got it. There you are, Colin. Paddleball, like- Quietly at the corner. Got it. Okay.
It's a combination.
Colin, please step over to the mic.
He stayed this-
There we go.
This is what you get for staying this long.
Colin, you got all dressed for the occasion and-
Good evening. Pickleball, it's an active adult sport. As Commissioner Jerry Joseph said, it's a smaller court. It uses a different-sized ball, different-sized paddles. We currently offer it on Saturdays and Sundays in the winter at Pelican Community Park, inside the basketball gym. When we rehabbed the gym, I believe it was two or three years ago now, we included those lines on the court. And our feedback has been great in the winter. Right now, I think we capped at 30 participants. And those are a mix of snowbirds that have come down, as well as some of our residents in the community. So you do have the ability to get more participation when you put, excuse me, more courts in that same space. And then you have, there is a need for it. But ultimately, it's the commission's decision to review the space and figure out exactly what we want to put in there. If it's gonna be basketball, pickleball, tennis, or any other plethora of ideas that we could come up with, with that space.
So there is pickleball interest in the community, right? So that's great, because I, I don't know.
There will be works with the, with the park, with some park, you know, park planning and park-
So in April, we'll be coming to you with a Parks Master Plan, a consultant for the Parks Master Plan that Sylvia and Genesis have worked on together. And, but that process will take about a year. So we could leave everything empty and looking like an old trailer for a year. Or we can do something that if we wanna convert it later, but keeping that-
But we could, we could easily adapt it for those, for that purpose, for some sort of a-
Yes, we will, we will discuss it with the contractor and try to see the best use of that space. And then we'll bring that to you.
Sounds good. For me, at least, the point is to, you know, continue along with active recreational. That seems to be something that's really much in pursuit.
And open space for the teenagers and the young people.
Right, but create active recreational space from, from what our city, what our city-owned properties are.
Absolutely. And that's the whole idea behind the Parks Master Plan, is to evaluate all of our spaces and our future needs, and then bringing that to the commission to ultimately make their determination of how they would like us to proceed.
Thank you, Colin. Can you just introduce yourself for, just for the public? So for those that don't know you, we know you.
Or who haven't seen you in a suit.
Your name and title, please.
My name is Colin Summers. I'm the Assistant Director of Cultural and Community Services.
Thank you, thank you, Colin. Thank you for the information.
Thank you, Colin. Thank you.
Oh, I'm an employee of the city. I'm in Ohio.
He's our city employee. I wanted you to know. Our Assistant Director for Parks, yes. That's why, I know. Now you know. Thank you.
Okay, so are we ready for Citizens, are we ready? Are we ready for Citizens Forum? We've had some very patient, very patient resident, Katie Vento. Katie, thank you for your patience. So just for the record, we spoke earlier. And, and I wanna acknowledge that you gave many suggestions and love for you to provide some, some of your input and your recommendations, critiques for the benefit of the entire commission.
No, and I appreciate having the opportunity to speak to you all. I'm from 310 188th Street in Golden Shores. I've been in the city for 27 years. And I'm a pediatric critical care nurse. So I'm very, very concerned about the safety in Golden Shores. And it doesn't just affect the residents in Golden Shores. It affects the children who have to walk onto the overpass to get to school. They, that's their walkway to school. As you all know, Collins now, it's very congested. And the people who are going along Collins, when they hit the red light on 189th Street, they cut through our neighborhood. They don't abide by the speed limit. There's some very unsafe practices. This morning, there was a man, he was riding at least 40 miles an hour, holding a cellphone out of his window. I mean, it's shocking. So we need a deterrent. And I, there's plenty of things we can do without any gates and stuff like that. I know that gets everybody all excited. We could stop the right on, the right turn on that light. That would put a stop to it. Put some cones up in peak hours. There's, there's so many things we could do. We could have a one-way system so it goes from south to north. Then they can't cut through there. They'll just be going around in circles. So I feel like there's a lot of things we can do. It's not just the residents in Golden Shores. It's other people who walk through. It's other people who walk through. There's actually, from underneath the overpass, you know, there's a little walkway. Yes. With arrows telling them to go that way. Now, you've got young families walking in the street to get to school in a neighborhood with no sidewalks, and people are cutting through and driving the same way as they drive on A18. And it's a public street, which means it's public safety, and it's the responsibility of the city to look at the public safety issue. You know, a lot of, I'm hearing, well, we can't do anything. It's a public street. No, you can do something because it is a public street. It's a public safety issue. So, I implore you, as a critical care nurse who looks after babies, to please address the issue once and for all with these, like, quick, it seems like easy solutions. I know I'm not a traffic flow expert. I only know what happens to children when they hit a vehicle. But I just really, if you could do something about it, it's got to the stage where my husband pleases with me not to go walk down there in the morning, and I feel unsafe down there. So, I appreciate you listening to me and have consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. We have one more public speaker, Rumina. Can't pronounce the last name.
Did you see everything exactly? Because in the beginning, start something else, and the people get tired, and everybody left.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Rumina Grusdanova, 220 186th Street. I want to address something about bother me many years ago. Nobody asked to pay for, to go to fishing, $6. Residents, $2. Never, never before was paying residents to pay. If you want to charge, who doesn't have an ID from STI or any ISO? Yes, but we never been charged before even. Nobody asked for ID, okay? Now, something in the Gateway Park, whoever would have, resident, $10. I went to get the police report. I get, copy $1, nor receipt. I don't know what to say. This is mine. I didn't pick up for somebody else, okay? Something, everything where you turn, city wants money from the resident. I don't know where you go. Only money collection. To go to the bridge, you have to pay. That's never happened. That's never happened. Think about for security. You said security. We said Collins is horrible. Yes, it's horrible. I hope to be better, but I don't see. It's not possible. Because another two buildings, another 1,000 car coming, is going to be worst. What we can do? I'm going to tell you, I'm seeing people cross the street even where they have to not crossing. Disgusting. And after, we blame some driver. Yes, have a driver, fast, driving, they don't care, like the lady says, with the phone? Yes, but the bicycle, do you know what's happened? You're driving slow. I'm just get from 185. And what's happened? The guy doesn't care about, he has a red light, but he's with the bicycle, and I stick the horn. Do you know what he did to me? Turn around, show me finger. This is the kind of people we have here. I think, no, they have to get education from the police. They have to have a ticket also. They have to stop all the people who drive fast. Yes. And I'm so happy our neighborhood, Golden Shores, have a camera on the exit, on the bus side, right? That is watching directly to the police station. That is very, very good. Like she said, in the middle of the street, in the Golden Shores, when I'm working, yes, the kids playing volleyball over there. They have no place to go. That's right. If it's on the corner, they have a playground, that is going to be good for them. And also have some owner on the North Bay Road with three property, okay? He's rich, okay, fine. Drive, his BMW, as crazy. Who is going to tell him something? Nobody. So, have a good people, have a bad people. Have a good kids, have a bad kids. But they have to learn from the house. They have to respect where have to go, how to speak. I'm sorry, but in the school, I don't know how they teach them, but that's from the parents. Because the parents supposed to give them the first seven years school. And in the public, you have no idea. I went to the manager, they're running inside, and they're laughing on you because you told me, don't run. Our, now is not good at all. And I see you give the idea, but probably they tell you about what to be over there. But it's coming, another fish stinks because some people want a gate, another doesn't want gate, but who wants gate? I'm counseling for the one year. They have 20 houses already sold in our neighborhood. Why? Because these people buy and sell. I don't want these people to take advantage because I'm over there before the city was created. So, I don't want many people, like this old lady, they don't want gate. And let me tell you, gate, I have a friend with a gate. Every week, the gate is broke, and they're not like on Collins. Think about if the car stopped at the gate because it's broke and they cannot get, that's go on Collins. It's going to block all the way. The people landscaping, how they're going inside. Do you think somebody's going to open? The people are not home, but they're going to cut the grass. What is going, that's not possible. But they don't get explained to the people what is plus, what is minus. That is two different things, but we are not going to discuss now. It's going to be probably another meeting. I see I passed the three minutes. I'm sorry. But next time, I see you're talking, teaching, okay, I understand. But I think during the day, when you're in the office, it's much better to ask question each other because the people cannot stay. They're tired. Like one time, 10 o'clock? No. September was 10 o'clock. So, I suggest to be more practical, by the agenda. Don't go far away. Go by the agenda, not, yes, and you ask, and you continue asking question to Jerry and do that, that's a long time. So, I'm sorry, go by the agenda. The people to have a patience, to stay and listen. And if somebody didn't put the card, I don't think was right to turn Greg back. Why? Because when is Maggie? You never stop her. Maggie's your favorite. You never stop her.
Ma'am, ma'am.
But this is not right.
Roomie, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you very.
You see, now, I thank you. You know why? And I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But that's the truth.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have any other items? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for staying.
Yep.